That was a wonderful 10 minutes. We talked about that saved us two hours.
Good evening, afternoon. It's Thursday, four o'clock, time for the Finance Committee meeting. We have several items on our agenda, but the main two are the FYE 2021 year-end reports and the FYE 2023 budget calendar. So with that, I will turn it over to our Finance Director, Anthony Francisco.
Thank you very much, Mayor. We are in the process of closing out our books for the fiscal year that ended June 30th of 2021. We have completed all of the financial statements, closed down all of the purchases and revenues, and we have turned over the year-end figures to our auditing team, our external auditing team. And so they are now at the beginning of their audit process. So I will first turn it over to Joe O'Hazar, who is a representative of BKB, our external auditor, and then we'll talk about, on a budget basis, kind of how things are looking at the end of the fiscal year, ending June 30th.
Thanks.
And I should point out, by the way, that the Finance Committee acts as the city's audit committee. Under federal regulations, we have to have an audit committee, this goes back to the post-Enron days, that is kind of the Board of Directors representative to receive the audit before it goes to the full council. So just know that you're wearing that hat as well.
Thank you, Anthony. I'm taking my mask off so I can speak a little more clearly, but yeah, as Anthony said, we're starting the audit. We've come to do what we call our interim procedures, which are getting everything together, do interviews of the cities, talk about fraud risks, just kind of look at the financial statements to get together our audit plan. And so what I brought today, and Clint just passed out, is our pre-audit report, basically, to the Audit Committee, just to give you an idea of how the audit's going to go. It really doesn't change much from year to year, but one of the things we do add is just the list of accounting standards that are coming out, as well as the auditing standards that regularly change. And the regulators have been very busy lately with new auditing standards, new accounting standards coming out, and so this year, the city's going to have to adopt what is GASB 84. And GASB 84 is a fiduciary activity standard, so think employee benefit plans, pension plans. What they're going to do and require is that any fiduciary-type activity that meets a detailed set of criteria, and it's a pretty complicated standard, I'll just put that out there right now, they may have to include those in the financial statements that hadn't been included in there in the past. For the city of Norman, I highly, I don't suspect there will be any additional items to report. Right now, the Pension Trust Fund is already reported as a fiduciary activity. One of the things we'll have to review is whether or not that needs to actually come out because of the clarification in these standards, but that's one thing we're working on right now. And down the road, we have one more standard that's coming out, which is GASB 87, and that's a standard on leases. It's actually effective for next year, as far as the audit is concerned, but the city has to adopt it as of October 1st. And one of the requirements for that is it really revamp the way leases are reported. And yeah, a lot of times, think of like the fire trucks, usually those are purchased under a lease agreement at the end of the lease term. Those can get purchased by the city for a very minimal amount, usually like a dollar. Those lease agreements are already being represented as liabilities on the financial statements. But what this new standard is going to do is really say, any lease agreement, even what we would call operating lease agreements, so if you lease buildings outside of the city, anything you lease will have to be evaluated as to whether or not it needs to be carried on the financial statements as an asset and a liability. So think of it this way, it's going to inflate your balance sheet, which talks about what you guys have, but it's also going to increase your liabilities, which affects some of the pension stuff. More than likely, it's just going to be a big standard that nets to zero at the end of the day. We, yeah, we hope. And so there's really no impact on the budget, on the financial statement, income statement, you know, how you earn money and how that gets represented, but it is a pretty complicated standard as well. And other than that, most everything, we expect to be the same. One of the big changes, again, is the CARES Act and the ARPA funding. We also perform a single audit, which is an audit of the federal awards that were expended. That's a part of the whole audit process. And so the CARES Act funding is probably going to be one that will have to be audited. We audited it last year, there was just a small amount of expenditures compared to what's going to happen this year. That program has gone through a lot of fluctuations over the past nine months, and one of those, and one thing we want to clarify with the state and kind of to back up, so all that CARES Act and the ARPA money, well, let's take out the ARPA. The CARES Act, which is what we're going to have to focus on, was awarded through the state of Oklahoma from the federal government. And typically, we have to audit those, the state is responsible overall for how that money is spent. They, as in the federal government, changed the way those regulations work, and so we've got to go back to the state and say, ask the state, do you guys call the city a subrecipient, where that has to be audited as a program? Or they created this new term called a beneficiary, which if you're a beneficiary of the state, that you don't report those funds on your federal awards expenditure schedule. And there's a lot of fluctuation, the Department of Treasury changed the guidance back and forth, and they actually didn't issue the guidance until nine months after they awarded the money. So we've been working backwards with this one.
You might remember that the single audit just went before council like a month or two, like two meetings ago, and that's way, way later than we've ever had it.
Yes. And that's why. They, the standards actually got published in January, and that money was required to be spent by the end of December originally. And so it's, it has been, it's been nothing but chaos lately from the federal government. So now that we have more regulations on that and a little bit better idea, that the state was pretty strict on how that money can be used, so again, we don't see any big problems with that, but we'll work with the state and figure out how they want that to be handled, because again, they passed out money to every city in the state, and so they have to be consistent with how they treat every city, and then we get a lot of, depending on who you talk to, different answers. But overall, there's the report to read if you want to, it'll give you an idea of what we do for audit procedures. And again, if you guys ever have any questions, just let us know. Our final fieldwork is scheduled to start in October, and usually runs that whole month, and then we wrap it up and hope to have everything wrapped up by Thanksgiving.
Anybody have any questions? All right, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Anything else on item number one, Mr. Francisco?
I'm going to pass around this fund summary format, and one thing I will point out is, once we have turned over our financial figures to the auditors, there's usually not any major changes before we come out with the final audit report that you'll receive, this committee will receive in November, and then it will go to the full council in December. But just know that there could be, and we'll talk about the big one.
Thank you.
But we're following the guidance that we have followed for the last several years, and so we don't think we're doing any big changes. What I want to draw your attention to mainly here, and you're familiar with the fund summary format, you have to be out at a certain time?
Yes, five.
Oh, okay. I was going to say four thirty.
Oh, no, no, no.
You're familiar with the fund summary format, you'll see that I did not include the out-year projections in here. We're just looking at column A, which is where we were when we presented and adopted the budget, fiscal year 21 estimated, where we thought we would be at the end of last fiscal year. And then column B is fiscal year 21 ending actual. So these are the figures that went to the auditors, and this is where we believe we actually closed the fiscal year, at least on a cash basis. Then column C is the fiscal year 22 budget that we're operating under now, and column D is where we think we will end this current fiscal year on June 30th of 2022. Just highlighting a few of the funds here, obviously, the General Fund is kind of where the action is, the largest fund of the city. Couple of things I wanted to highlight, just for your attention, in line 10, those other revenues, and that is where the CARES Act and ARPA money funds have been recorded. A lot of the ARPA funds are actually recorded in a separate fund, the Special Grants Fund 22, but the CARES Act money is in there, both going in and coming out, so that's why that number is so uncommonly big. On line 22, I wanted to draw your attention to the capital outlay figure. You'll recall that this is where we budget for capital outlay expenditures for things like replacing vehicles and computers and that sort of thing. In this line item, the money actually comes from the capital fund and is transferred to whatever fund equipment is actually going to be used. So where equipment is in the General Fund, for example, in street maintenance or park maintenance, we're buying a tandem dump truck or a backhoe or something, we thought we would spend about $4.9 million in fiscal year 22, we actually spent about $3.7 million. But there's also some things that we have obligated to purchase that have not come in yet. And what I wanted to draw your attention to, if you look on line 37, you'll notice that those lines rush out. So line 37 is the money actually going out, line 22 is the money coming in from the capital fund. So it's a net zero to the bottom line, but it's obviously a very big number. Where I'm telling you we have obligated for some things, that we have actually not paid out the check yet, that is the number on line 64, where we are reserving for encumbrances. Encumbrances is where we have done a purchase order to a specific vendor to buy something like a tandem dump truck or a backhoe, but the equipment has not come in yet, and so we haven't paid the bill yet. So we carry over the encumbrance into the next fiscal year, and that's what you see that is inflating both the fund balance and that expenditure number. That's something that often gets confused. I also wanted to draw your attention to these inter-fund transfers, this is basically where the CARES Act money was going out. On line 44, council directed that we try to make a transfer to the rainy day fund to bring it up to its targeted level. We'll talk about PSST here in a minute. Same with the transit fund, those are the subsidies to those two funds to make those special revenue funds net to zero. On line 47, that is the CARES Act funds the council appropriated to the Arts Council and to the Visit Norman. On line 48, the transfer to the Norman Forward Fund, that is the funds that the CARES Act money, the council appropriated to the Senior Citizens Wellness Center. So again, just from an accounting standpoint, you see those monies going in and going out. Down there on line 62, you see our ending fund balance for the fiscal year at $5.4 million, which is about $3 million more than we were projecting, that's a good thing. But again, a large part of that is those carryover encumbrances. So taking out those carryover encumbrances, you see on line 67, that we're really close to being exactly on our 3% mandated operating reserve that you see there. On line 65, we're $285,000 short of that. So in a $100 million budget, that's pretty darn good.
Well done.
I did want to draw your attention to line 45, which is the transfer, the subsidy, if you will, to the Public Safety Sales Tax Fund. It was actually $2.4 million in fiscal year 21. Right now, we're projecting that it's going to be about $2.2 million in fiscal year 22, and that is quite a bit more than what we had projected when we adopted the budget. So it's about a million two more than we thought it was going to be if everything happens as is projected to happen during this fiscal year.
That and our pattern of failing bridges is very alarming to me.
Again, if everything happens as is projected to happen on line 60, we will draw down about $4.9 million of fund balance in this fiscal year. We hope that won't actually come to pass, but that's the current projection, and we would end the year with a fund balance of only $550,000, which on line 67, in column D, you see is about $2 million short of our mandated reserve of 3%.
So I went to law school, not finance school, but what I'm hearing you say is, we're expecting a $2 million deficit for the current fiscal year in which we're operating.
Revenues, less expenditures, we're expecting almost a $5 million deficit, if you were to look at it that way. Now, we do think, and that's on line 60, we do think there'll be some carryover expenditures, and we hope that the revenues will come in, and they have been so far this year, come in over budget, and we hope that the expenditures will come in under budget, we hope that we won't have to spend the emergency reserve that you see there on line 50, but we sure did last year. So, you know, these are all projections, but if all the projections are right, we would be $2 million below our mandated operating reserve, and that's not a good thing.
Well, it looks like last year, we had expected almost a, you know, $1.4 million deficit and came out ahead, so maybe we could be optimistic. But you and I had discussed, one of the things that makes me feel more optimistic long-term is the new public safety districts that deal with property tax. Because if we can relieve our general fund of the $2.2-plus million of supplementing the PSST, that will make me feel a whole lot more comfortable. So I've asked the city manager to invite OML to come give that same presentation. I've been communicating with Mayor Bynum about their plan, and so we'll actually have an example, I mean, we could also do it ourselves, I suppose, but to watch how theirs goes, because that's going to be crucial to quit drowning under this. And my understanding is that it does not raise property tax, correct?
No, that's not my understanding. My understanding is that...
Okay, that's like, because Lauren was telling me it didn't, and I was like, well, that makes zero sense on how...
My understanding is that just for those public safety districts, the citizens could vote to impose a property tax for that purpose. It's a different purpose than we have ever had to use property taxes at the municipal level. level.
Cause we're just now allowed to do it by legislation that just passed.
Yes.
Yeah. But, but it would be, as I understand it, it would be a property tax increase.
And is it 60%?
It's up to, I believe, up to 10 mils.
Okay.
60% bookroom?
Yes, it, yes. I think that's right.
Okay. Well, looking forward to that presentation.
Absolutely. Yeah, law league one's been done by OML and Tulsa out there in front.
Option.
Um, and we'll look closely at how public safety has been defined, which is, you know, half of the magic. How do you define public safety in your district?
On the next page, just quickly, um, this is looking at the rainy day fund. The actual title is the net revenue stabilization fund. You see that we ended fiscal year 21 in column A, about $250,000 above our mandated minimum in that fund with a fund balance of just over $4 million, but about $700,000 short of our 5% targeted reserve, um, in that fund, despite that $135,000 transfer coming in on line eight of the CARES Act money that went into that fund. Um, now, a big reason for that is because of all of those CARES Act related expenditures. Remember, the, the reserve target and mandate in the rainy day fund is key to expenditures. And because we have all of those expenditures in the general fund, the mandated reserve goes up. So, so I think we're okay there. Um, again, all things being equal, at the end of fiscal year 22, we would end, uh, this fiscal year about $370,000 short of our targeted reserve, but about $500,000 in excess of our minimum reserve.
That seems to be on the right track then.
That's not...
Manage that bad.
And we will review that again come, uh, mid-year review in January or February. And that's when council makes a decision about if they want to make a deposit, plant to the rainy day fund. Drilling down a little bit into the public safety sales tax fund, this is kinda what's behind the numbers that you saw. Um, the biggest thing that I wanted to point out there is the continuing, um, expenditures related to the bond projects, particularly now, uh, for the emergency operations center building. We're projected that those funds will be drawn down this fiscal year and next. Uh, once we have finished all of those bond projects, we'll have a much shorter picture of, of where this fund actually sits. But again, as far as the bottom line is concerned, it, it really does relate to what we need to have as an operating subsidy into that fund. Uh, and, and that's what you see on line 11. Remember, it's a revenue to this fund, it's an expenditure from the general fund. On line 13, you see the amount that the normal public schools pays in for the SRO program. And again, that is just based on 50% of salaries. We did wanna touch on the room tax fund on the last page that you see there. Again, this fund was in dire straits, um, mid-year last year. Council did take some very proactive steps, um, to, to help out the fund balance in this fund. On line six, you see that transfer from the general fund of $175,000, uh, that both went to, um, increasing the programs of visit Norman and the arts council that you see there on lines 12 and 14. And it also improved the fund balance that you see on lines 28 and 30. So we still have some concern about the fund balance picture for the, uh, arts and humanities portion of the room tax. But hopefully, you know, we have some more weekends like this one coming up where all the hotels are full and, and we will exceed our revenue projections. Um, and again, those are just projections, but if we do that, then, then that should work itself out. It's really all I wanted to highlight. Um, and again, there is information like this for every fund of the city. Uh, if you're interested in having trouble sleeping, we'll be glad to afford that to you. Um, if there's any questions, I'll try to respond to them.
Well, we had, what, four weather emergencies last year and still managed to come out better than we thought we would, uh, in a pandemic. I know federal funds helped with that, but I'm gonna take an optimistic view of FYE 22 and see what we can do with that. Public safety districts again are on the horizon.
And we have an award-winning finance director.
That's right. Who's gonna save us.
The feeling, if, if, just if you do that gut check, it feels optimistic. It's, we, the last couple of years, not so much. Uh, but, and I think it's what we're seeing. We're seeing, you know, football stadiums full of people and, and hotels full, and, and that's the kind of energy. And of course, you know, last five, uh, sales tax deposits in a row, and after we saw the third one, we assumed, well, that stimulus money had evolved and spent a while ago. So we're not quite sure where it's all coming from. Um, we're seeing a lot of help wanted signs up, but nobody is asking for rental assistance. Uh, there are assumptions that perhaps all the people who used to work in these jobs now work elsewhere and are literally paying the rent and spending some more disposable income. So, um, similar conversations are taking place all over Oklahoma. Everybody's asking, how is our revenue so high, yet there's so many help wanted signs in storefronts? And those two usually don't coincide.
I was actually gonna ask Mr. Francisco to elaborate on what you showed me earlier, please.
Okay, so this is kinda the next item on your agenda, but you get these monthly reports. Uh, and one of the monthly reports compares sales tax growth, um, in Norman to, uh, a lot of our neighboring cities in Oklahoma. And, um, for this particular month, for the month of September, we were up 31.1%.
I need to see that bar chart again. It was very depressing there for quite a long time.
Yeah. Norman always lags the trends, both positive and negative, but because, you know, we were so relatively bad last year or two, we are really good right now. And, and the mayor couldn't help us from saying, we're number one. This is, it's unusual for us to lead the way, but, but, um, for this particular month, we're up 31%. Oklahoma City was up only 16%. Moore was up 15%. Edmund was up 9%. Uh, Tossa was up 15%. So, so we're relatively doing really well. Um, and, and we hope that will continue. It has been at least a three or four month trend now for our sales tax. I also note, and you'll see, uh, in your, in your monthly reports, that our use tax growth has slowed down. We're still growing, but instead of use tax growing by 20 and 30% on a monthly basis, it's only up by like 8%, which is a pretty good indicator of a change in consumer behavior, probably related to the pandemic of people who were not getting out of their homes, ordering a bunch of stuff online, and now they're getting back out and, and shopping in stores, buying, you know, pants and shirts at stores and eating in restaurants and that sort of thing. And, and so that shift in behavior that we saw going into the cave, we're seeing kinda now coming out of the cave. At least is, is reflected in sales tax growth and use tax growth. So it's a, it's a very interesting place that we're in. And, and, you know, again, I never get too excited about one month, but this is a three or four month trend now. So, so we hope that will continue.
And, and, you know, you mentioned they lagged two months, so I'm wondering, the, the Delta variant very, very much spiked over the last two months. Uh, with my weekly emergency management meetings today, it, even Norman, it, cause Norman was kinda behind in the drop, but now we're in the drop. And so I won't be surprised if we see a slight dip because our numbers went up, but hopefully it'll bounce back because we're appearing to be on the, the downhill slide. So we'll see what happens.
I gotta talk to you about something.
Alarming.
Would you like to share?
Yeah.
It's how we manage the portfolio, you know, we go to the track.
All right. All right, onto the budget calendar. How about that?
Uh, the budget calendar is in your packet. I will, I do have paper copies if anybody needs them. Um, I will introduce, um, Kim Kaufman, our budget manager, who is here, um, to respond to any questions that you might have. Basically, this is just following, um, the, the prior year's budget calendar with the dates changed. You'll recall that we had kind of an anomaly last year with the, the way the council meetings were working out for budget adoption. Um, so this is kinda more conventional, where council would consider the budget for final adoption on June the 14th. Um, and we sure hope y'all don't do any, you know...
I know.
Postponements inside. Uh, but again, all of the, all of the public hearing deadlines and all of that are, are followed here. Um, all of the, the council meetings that are, that are being mandated are bolded. Um, you would start with a capital budget retreat on November the 16th. Again, that is kinda when council tells us. We will tell council, um, those projects that are underway, how we're doing budgetarily related to those projects, um, things that have come up that the project managers believe we really need to, to shift some funds to this sort of a project. The Imhoff Bridge would be a really good example of that, where something has come up during the course of the last few months that changes budget priorities for capital projects or, or for operating projects. That's the sort of thing that you talk about in that November the 16th. And then you also give us what your priorities might be as we prepare the budget going forward. If you have any questions, Kim or myself will try to respond to them.
And I'll, I'll just point out, this is one of the, the sticking points of moving swearing-in dates because someone could get sworn in, not this term, obviously, and if, if it passes, cause it's gotta go for an election and we don't even know when that's gonna be at this point, thanks to the state legislature. But, uh, the July was set because they come in at the beginning of a fiscal year. And now if they come in in a February or April, they'll, they're right at the tail end of it. And I don't, I mean, if, if a council member runs on making changes to the budget and comes in and, you obviously have to have five votes to do anything, but just wanted to point that out to anyone watching. I mean, I'm sure you all know this, but that is an interesting possible, yeah, dynamic and, and issue that may come up should that change ever be enacted. So I, I get the frustration of being delayed, of being sworn in. I was a five-month mayor-elect, so I get it, but it does make sense in this niche area of city government, so.
And I will say, that's why the charter was changed some years ago for the swearing-in to happen in July, so that the sitting council members would, would adopt the budget. But again, the wisdom of the people will rule.
Anything else regarding the calendar? Any questions? All right. Um, discussion regarding the month of revenue and expenditures report?
Kinda touched on those already. Um, just trying to respond to any questions that you have.
I have no questions at this time. Councilor Tortorello, you got anything?
Nope. Looks pretty copacetic to me.
Okay. Then our final item would be the submission of the open positions report.
Let's try to see if Gail is here.
I didn't see her.
I really can't speak to any individual positions outside of my own department, uh, but, um, here on May, if there's any...
Daryl, what I'd be curious about, which I think I had texted you, um, a while ago and have since slept, um, the sustainability coordinator and that new title and all that fun stuff, and the comms director, I'd be very curious.
Uh, our communications director, Mrs. Tiffany Verska, uh, she is with her husband out house hunting mightily, um, after hours and on the weekends, so she can get the house sold. They live in a lot and long commute, so, uh, they're hoping to complete a real property transaction here in the next handful of weeks and move it, get on board. She is, uh, anxious. She did, uh, join the team as part of the, um, emergency management operations center training on Tuesday at OML last week, so that was wonderful. Um, our, uh, environmental and sustainability coordinator is on board. She is in Chris's department. And, um, I just, her name will come to me as soon as I stop thinking about it.
Michelle?
Yes.
Bob Mc...
Uh, great experience with the Department of Environmental Quality. Um, she already comes to us with a, a hefty resume, a, a rolodex of DEQ contacts and communications. We did receive a communication from DEQ, uh, telling us they wanted to, wanted us to respond to a complaint about, uh, material being deposed, uh, disposed of in one of our creeks that feeds into, uh, the Canadian River. And my first thought was, where's Dr. Evenson when I need her? But we were covered because our new environmental stability coordinator knew exactly what that meant and how to address it and who to call at the DEQ to make sure those lines of communication are wide open.
Glad to hear that. Okay. Excellent. All right. Well, since we don't have a bigger report than that, any other final thoughts about this finance meeting?
Did have a, a number from, uh, Gail. I'd asked her, question came in from the newspaper about, well, how many employees they were talking about, um, OSHA's pending rules on mandating businesses was over, with over 100 employees. And the question was, how many employees does the city of Norman have? And as of last payday, the city of Norman had 819 full-time employees, 18 permanent part-time employees, and 86 part-time employees for a total headcount of 923.
And what was the part-time, not the permanent part-time?
Uh, 86 part-time as of last payday.
Who was the 18 again?
Permanent part-time. Well, give me an example of a permanent part-time and how it's different from a part-time.
Um, I don't, you might have like traffic enforcement that may only work, they maybe schedule 20 hours a week and that's all they do. And believe it or not, there is a market for people who want, I don't wanna do 40 hours anymore. You know, we catch people who are retired from their first career and just looking for old golf money or fishing money, um, and fill in wonderfully in a permanent part-time.
We have a lot of permanent part-time employees at Partland, that's good.
At Westwood right now.
Would that be in permanent part-time or just part-time in Westwood? Cause I was thinking that was more...
Part-time.
Okay, that's what I was thinking of with the, that.
Yes, then we have a lot of seasonal employees who work full-time, but only during like the summer season.
Okay. Right on. Okay, well, obviously we are more than 100, so we'll, we'll see what happens with, with OSHA and whatnot, but either way, we'll have that vaccine incentive in place, so we can keep the...
The trains running and the trash picked up and the water clean, so.
All right, well, seeing no other discussion, this finance committee meeting is adjourned. Thank you for being here.
Bye.